I'd like to call the joint meeting to order. If you can, would you please rise for the question? Okay, thank you for coming. I guess this is a slightly unorthodox meeting setup, given that the town of Atsico and the village board are both here together. I don't know if everyone on the boards or in the audience knows board members and we don't have our nameplates, whatever. So Ellen was saying it might make sense to quickly introduce the board members that are here.
Yeah, I'm Ellen Silaqua, Mayor of the Village of Cooperstown, and I have trustees here.
Joe Membrinos.
Richard Sternberg.
And I would like to point out George Fassinelli prevailed in the village. Great to have an additional member here.
And on the town of Atsico side, I am Ben Bauer, the current town supervisor. And we also have with us. Chris Coley, Matthew Whistler, and I think that's it. So I think Ellen can take over to here and sort of. Oh, yeah.
Basically, probably about five years ago, 2018, discussions began between the village and the town of Atsico concerning the property that basically runs along Linden Ave, specifically Linden Ave itself and the village-owned property, county-owned property on the west side of Linden Ave. A lot of people don't even realize when they leave the Village of Cooperstown because Linden Ave continues all the way down to Route 28. So we met then in 2018 for a few times. The pandemic shut us all down. And so about a year ago in April 2022, I then, along with the Deputy Mayor Cindy Clark, began attending some town of Atsico meetings because obviously it was new people, new faces, new boards to reintroduce the sort of discussions that we had begun previous. So I'm sure most of you, your town of Atsico representatives, you know, the boundary for the town of Atsico. It's shown there on the left with the red outline. And this is the Village of Cooperstown. And right now it looks equally as big as the town of Atsico, but it's not. It's much smaller. The interesting thing about the Village of Cooperstown, which a lot of people know, is that we're divided into two townships. The Susquehanna River is the dividing line. So all of us that live in the village west of the Susquehanna are town of Atsico residents. We pay town of Atsico taxes, et cetera. Anyone on this side, the east side of the Susquehanna, is in the town of Little. So. So this gives you a clearer sense on the scale. Over there, you have the town of Atsico, again outlined in pink. And you see the shape of Cooperstown's limit there. And obviously, our normal, what is it, Pentagon shape is truncated because the section that is in middle field is not shown. This is a good little map. It's, I'm sorry, but it's a little blurry because it does sort of show you the area we're going to be talking about tonight, which is Linden Ave. So interestingly, this is walnut there. Linden Ave, you start down before you get too far, you've left the Village of Cooperstown. Now you have no real recognition of that, and you're suddenly in the town of Atsico. But this is the area right there that Linden Ave goes back out to Route 28 that we're going to be discussing. And here's an aerial view. So you sort of get an idea of the the properties and what it looks like. The top up there, I'm gonna get over there without straggling myself. Be careful. For a second, I wanted to show you what this is the county property. This is Linden Ave, which goes all the way down here on the outside of Route 28. The next property is the town or the village highway department, the village parking lot or the blue block. And, sorry, Bruce, I almost left you off. And as well, this is the railroad right there. So the area we're really talking about is from the curve, the east curve of Linden Ave west to the boundary of railroad, including though the entire section of Linden Ave out to Route 28. And here's just a little map with the properties, tax map properties designated on it. Again, the very first one is the county highway department. And so literally, this about this much of this property is in the Village of Cooperstown. So you're going down Linden Ave and right there you exit the village. The next property is the Village of Cooperstown's highway department. And again, you can see the acreage and key thing to remember on all these, they're all tax-exempt, non-inhabited. There's no residence. It's all municipal-owned county and village property. And then, of course, it's interesting because it's a tax map number dash 20 for the highway building, village highway building, and dash 18 for the blue lot, but they're kind of joined. And in fact, if you look up 18, you get a picture sort of still of our trolley barn, but that is the this is the parking lot that we're talking about there. And then the little section that goes out to Route 28. You want to walk down it. This is sort of, you see what it looks like. You start passing the county building. I don't know if you've noticed this. This started occurring just yesterday. There's an area of the county building that had really not been usable for some time. And so yesterday, they began a tear down of that area. And then you come to the village's highway department. Proceed on. This is still village highway building. And now we're in the blue lot. And you can see this is the edge of our trolley there. And the road out to Route 28, crossing the railroad track. I wanted to give a little bit of history on that area and why there, I think the village felt a little invested in it. There was a project. It began in about 2008, under like three mayors ago. And over the course of six, I almost think it was seven years to get it to completion under my predecessor, Judge Katz. And it was called sometimes the Gateway Project, sometimes Linden Ave Project, sometimes Cooperstown Intermodal Transit Center, which was CIT. So you'll hear those names. It was basically funded largely through a federal highway administration grant, which in New York State, all those federal grants from the federal highway administration are administered by New York State DOT. The project cost, well, it kept kind of growing, enlarging, and then shrinking as need be. I happened to read over a bunch of the newspaper articles and the files that the village has on this. And at one point, it soared up to like almost 7 million, more than 7 million. And aspects of the project were, components were removed. We get back to about a $5 million cost. It was again funded by a federal highway administration grant. You'll find funding for this project in village budgets from 2008 to 2014. And then in 2014, the project was done and the village took a 10-year bond for half a million dollars to pay overtime. So this work that's down there has been a major financing for the village taxpayers. Next year in 2024, we will finally pay off that bond. But I think you'd have to agree, it was a visual improvement. It provided parking. I took this yesterday afternoon at about 5 o'clock and the parking lot was sort of empty. But even during the winter months, that parking lot is well utilized by Basset Hospital employees and others during the summer. Of course, it's our pre-peripheral parking lot for our trolley system. Interestingly, in that, in the files on the Gateway CIT project, there was this one which talked about the ultimate, the transfer of jurisdiction for Linden Ave and that from yellow there from the town of Atsico to the Village of Cooperstown. As far as we can ascertain, none of this really ever took place. There was no official transfer and to the village. So it was sort of a village project and we have done a lot of the maintenance there. So these are, again, are the five properties that were considered in this sort of extension of the southern boundary, largely because the village already had a ton of investment in this area. And what's key is, again, they're all uninhabited. There's no residences. No one lives there. It's all municipally owned or Railroad Historical Society owned, so they're all tax-exempt. There's zero tax impact. One municipality wouldn't be losing tax revenue and another wouldn't be gaining it. It's, boy, there is. So for a change in municipal jurisdiction, and that's really what this would be, what is in the overall public interest is what is considered. And that is what is taken into consideration when trying to do these things. So we covered a few public interest considerations. So let's just review a few of them. The first would be public safety, law enforcement. These properties, as I said, are all uninhabited, but they lend themselves to mischief or worse. As we think about security, it's important that Atsico County fuel tanks and county and village equipment be secure. The town of Atsico doesn't have a police department. So like most of us outside our municipal boundary, we would rely on the county sheriff's department to control this. And actually, the Village of Cooperstown, because it has a police department, does routinely patrol this area. But it has no jurisdictional authority. So annexation would codify that jurisdictional issue and it would give our police department and the authority to issue everything from a parking ticket. We actually have had recreational vehicles camp for a week in our blue lot and we have no way to sort of enforce not doing that because it's not our jurisdiction. And also, if there's criminal mischief or anything, again, our police department could intercede, but they cannot. They don't have authority there. Another public interest consideration is public safety, the pedestrian safety. When the Gateway Project went in in about 2012, 13, the village installed a sidewalk on the east side of Linden Ave. Prior to that, there really wasn't good pedestrian access to the school, safe access to the school for our students. And we installed the sidewalk. We also installed or paint each year five crosswalks in this area and put in appropriate signage so that they're safe. The students parked out here, they can, you know, cross in the crosswalk to the, to the school. In addition, the village shovels and maintains that 1,120 feet of sidewalk, which is in the town's jurisdiction. Again, it's beyond our boundary. And we actually purchased some equipment to help with that process during the winter months. Public interest considerations on public safety, vehicular safety. There, the roadway, Linden Ave, and again, you barely realize when you leave Cooperstown and you enter the town of Atsico, Linden Ave is divided by the village and the town boundary. And it's really in the public interest to have a single jurisdiction of a roadway for purposes of paving. The village has done all the paving and the maintenance, the gravel and stone, et cetera, on that road. By annexing that section of Linden Ave beyond our village limit, it would relieve the town of maintenance work and seasonal plowing, which in fact, the village has routinely done there. The, in fact, we plow the town road, if you'll think of it, Linden Ave for about almost half a mile from the end of our village limit to where it turns onto Route 28. And so although we have done many of these public safety services where these streets are concerned, there's never been any sort of shared services agreement. And so we've just been assuming the costs and the time for our utilities. There, another public interest consideration is liability. Even though the village put that in and tries to keep it clear of snow, et cetera. If someone trips and falls on that sidewalk, it's in the town of Atsico. So they have liability exposure for that as well. And, you know, there is also, you know, the liability issues pertaining to the road, the railroad, et cetera. When we began some of these discussions, there was, you know, a real focus. Well, what if the county does something with their highway department? You know, that had been sort of floated for a while. I know that they have not purchased any property. They have looked at some spots, but that doesn't seem to be something that's very high on the agenda. And so it's very much down the road, but I think people were wondering about that. So is this just so the village can control something, Jan? I think I would suggest that housing is in everyone's best interest for the village. You can read that. It supports our population growth and economic sustainability. It provides housing for teachers, people who are employed at Basset, senior citizens, students at CGP and Basset. We're a very pedestrian-friendly community. So in some ways, people who live there would be doing a lot of walking and it could cut down on commuter traffic coming in. They wouldn't be living outside the village and driving in for work or for shopping. They would be able to use our sidewalks. For the county of Atsico, a property cleared for concentrated residential development would increase its value and therefore its sales price. For the town of Atsico, new property tax revenue from land formerly tax-exempt. Because remember, this is west of the Susquehanna, so it's in the town of Atsico taxes. And it reduces pressure for communities like White Creek and the surroundings on their scenic rural lands, which, you know, could be, which are being converted to residential use. Another public interest consideration is on that future development. In the village, when those of us who write grants, you always get to this section of a grant application that says, what's your administrative capacity? And what that basically means is what's your staff, what's your, who are your employees? Who's going to help implement this grant, this multimillion-dollar grant? Will it be you alone or what's your resources? So we have this great little, about a two paragraphs field that I think Cindy and I both kind of throw in there. Because think about it, we have a clerk, wonderful Jenna. We have a deputy clerk. We have a treasurer. We have a deputy treasurer. And we have a DPW superintendent. And our DPW superintendent has really, particularly for a lot of our infrastructure and highway grants, has really come to the fore and processes everything through New York State Gateway. We have had a lot of grants go through the village that Gateway Project was a federal highway administration. A few years ago, we had a TEP transportation enhancement that basically redid our sidewalks, established rain gardens on our main street. That also was a federal highway administration brand. That was a $2.7 million brand. We are nearing the completion of about a $7.2 million renovation of our double-day field complex. That's Empire State Development Bonds as well as state and municipal grants from Dastney. And we have the capacity to facilitate construction. When Ten Chestnut, which has 13 debt-zero energy-use built apartments in it, was working through our various boards, we were able to facilitate that and in order to ultimately end up with a housing project, the first housing project to be built in the village, apartment-style housing project in over 50 years. Zoning. Now, I know that Ben was just saying they updated their zoning law. But when we first began these discussions, actually, housing wouldn't have been of allowable use in the town of Atsico for that property, the county property in Linden Ave. For us, it's a commercial zone and it's permitted our multifamily dwellings. So it could be apartment building, single and two-family dwellings were allowed by special permit. It also allows for municipal use. In other words, the parking lot that we had south of the village would have been allowed ourselves. There's also public utilities. The Village of Cooperstown obviously has a wastewater treatment plant. It's a recently upgraded, $8.4 million upgrade of our wastewater treatment plant, accomplished with a lot of grant assistance. And we have a municipal water work. So residences, businesses in our community are on municipal water and sewer. We do extend water and sewer to some residences and properties outside the village, but we're under absolutely no obligation to do so. And in fact, because those residences or whoever outside the village are not taxpayers, they're not village residents, they get charged double. So whatever your water sewer rate is, it's double usage for outside of village. And that can have an impact on someone looking to develop any property. If there isn't a viable utility like water and sewer, that it would greatly limit its prospects. And I'm sorry, this is a little bit blurry because I just wanted to copy and paste. I didn't want to have to put input data. But there is the concern. Okay, so what if the county building, you know, does highway moves elsewhere? Something's built there. Well, the village is going to get all the tax revenue. Yeah, it's in the village. We're providing services, streets, et cetera. We would have, would have a tax liability. The, but this is an interesting comparison because again, we're all town of Atsico residents of your rest of the Susquehanna. So the real property, Atsico County real property did a sort of a sample for us, taking a $2 million property. On the top, you can see what their taxes would be. Our tax rate is $5.19 per thousand in the village. The town has two rates, really. It's called town outside, meaning their taxes they impose for properties, taxable properties outside the village and now in village. And I think you could see here that on a $2 million property, the county is like, it's passed. And then there's here, the highway outside the village is $245.40. And then there's also on the town outside, general. Yeah, it's $1,660. So that's a total of $262. The Atsico County or the Atsico Fire Protection District would receive that particular $497.60. When I was looking up more information on that, because even though I've now told you where the village line ends, even so, the village fire department probably be the first one to any residence or place along there. But those properties all pay to the Atsico Fire District, which is basically the White Creek sort of area there. And their budget is determined each year and then they divide it by the tax levy sort of thing. And this year it was 25 cents, $1,000. And, or I'm sorry, in 2022, it was 25 cents. And this year in 2023, it's 15 cents. So it can really fluctuate if that's where that beat goes. So this doesn't go to the town. It goes just to the fire district. If that same $2 million property were in the village, the town would still be getting all that except for these two. So it is a difference of $262 per year in loss revenue. I think I probably jumped over a few things, but we can move on. And if anyone has any questions, we'll try and answer for anything that wasn't clear. You know, this is a jurisdictional, it's a jurisdictional thing. No, it would just be in our jurisdiction. The property would still be owned by the county and they could sell it to whoever they want. Maybe they sell it to someone who establishes a car dealership there. It's up to the county. They own the property at this point.
Yeah, I think the reason housing is brought up is
Yeah, I think the reason housing is brought up is that is one of the likely. Right, but who knows?
I'm sorry, Mark, could you?
What she was saying was that one of the prerequisites, one of the things that should entail a lot of foresight. Is and forethought is traffic. Traffic's a problem on that street. We don't have any jurisdiction.
You're in the town of Atsico.
One of the problems that we look at.
There, there has been vandalism at times.
Hey, when I grew up here, it was nothing but a dead end street. They gravelled it up. And then when the gateway came through, they forced sidewalk up the east side of.
In the, again, the sidewalk for large part is in the town of Atsico. It is in the village right away for the street. And I can't really tell you how that was addressed back then because I wasn't.
It wasn't for kids walking to school, but they have sidewalk right down the long fence here.
Yeah, they would come down the street, the people, I forget the name of the company that was employed. At the time we were doing the gateway project, but they found that kids would come down. On the sidewalk on Linden and then step into the street. And that was considered a safety concern, so as part of that project, they put in the sidewalks. And then as a further part of it, because the owners of the property weren't really interested in shoveling or maintaining it. The village entered into an agreement. To to shovel all those sidewalks, so we have people out doing that, so when kids are walking to school or home. It's, it's snow free.
Like my mom's house, that's all the roach and rock, you know, it's that all will stay that way.
So I, I think, yes. Right, zoned as our general business district. But this section that the discussion for annexation is. Would then be under village jurisdiction. Right, but the the town zoning in that area doesn't change. To do the annexation. So Ellen, Ellen has tried to just talk through a bunch of the potential. Positive implications.
This is really just an informational meeting at this point. There, the process, I can tell you, I saw. A little unclear at this point. It might be potentially a petition process. It might be a resolution, but. We're leaving that to the town's attorney and the village attorney to work out some of the details on it. But again, it ends at the curve, the east curve of Linden, so it doesn't involve any. Properties that are residences or are inhabited. That's why this is a little bit unique because there it is all uninhabited, tax exempt property, so. You know, we can talk about taxes going down the road should something be developed there, but right now, there's. No tax. Issue whatsoever because the town isn't getting any tax revenue from it. The. Village isn't getting anything. It's, it's tax exempt.
It would be in the jurisdiction, it would be taxed by the village and the town. But it would be in the jurisdiction of the village in the sense that there'd be police presence. We can provide. Water sewer at the lower rates. It would be under our zoning code, but only what's being annexed and annexation is kind of an odd phrase. Because there's no title change. The county or whoever they've sold it to will still own it. It's just they're now in the village. The roadways in the village, which were maintaining actually one benefit for the town that would have hurt here. Is that if we cease maintaining it, the school would be down on the town's throat to do it. Because they need it for school purposes and other purposes, so the town would be. Having that cost thereafter, but. The, there won't be really any change of title or who owns it. Anybody will be able to buy that from the county. Why the county will likely be willing to join in this is however, that the value of their property will. Be considerably greater. We do have grant ability, grant obtaining ability. And it's a brownfield. It's going to cost several million dollars probably. You have to clean it up, but we believe we have the granting ability and our administration ability. To obtain that and assist them in doing that. Yes, he said, well, my side of the street be in the village and it will not. You can wave. You know, trucks going by, village trucks, but you are in the town. Nothing changes. Your current zoning, your taxes now. All of that will stay the same. You're not paying anything to the village. Outside of your water, which would be cheaper if you were in.
If they put sewer in, they're going to force us to run sewer.
You're in the town. We can't force you. We don't run our shoreline down past it, do we?
No, it doesn't come down.
Or does it? Yeah, no, but if you, you know. It'll probably be on the other side, but if you.
You would probably be optionally able to attach, but no one would force you to.
There any other questions?
I, I just, I'm Andrew Marrieta. I'm the county. And I, we, the county does have a highway garage site. The Boise's facility in Melford. And so I think, and we have a quote for new facility. That is part of the challenge, it's over fifty million dollars. From that new highway ride building, so we're trying to figure out how we're going to pay for that. New highway ride. So that's, that's a multi-year endeavor. What's that? Yes, I would say. About ten years to knock down that back garage building that happened last week. That took about ten. So if you look at how long it took us to knock that down, although I will say I think we're. We have a good handle on what we need to do and that we need in the modern garage building. It's just a matter of. How soon can we get out of that property? And I, I will say, I mean, I'm also on the idea, we, you know, there are developers interested in that property, so we're happy. So I mean, it's, you know, I think the suburb of the county can. Kind of move out of the way. I think, you know, we, we, there's something that that property.
As far as the county building.
The county is on village water sewer currently. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, hi Kevin. The, in the village, if it's still zone commercial, which it is on our zoning map. It would allow for multifamily and. Small, what, two and three person. Residences on with a special permit.
So right now it's town zoning and if the annexation were to happen, it would become village zoning.
Right. And the, when we first began this discussion a year ago, interestingly, that's. At that time was zoned and it still is, I guess, general business one and general business one did not allow. For residential, any housing. They have now recently updated it, but it's, it wouldn't allow for multifamily. It wouldn't allow an apartment building or anything to be built there. Any other questions?
I was gonna say, just one small correction, I guess, is the, the fire money. The Atsico Fire Protection District is money that goes to the Cooperstown Village Fire Department.
It goes to you and then back to us? We have a service contract with town of Atsico, but that's for. Prop, when we respond and it's not mutual aid, same way with town in the middle.
I could look into it further, but I'm pretty confident White Creek Fire District is a separate.
I know it's not, it's Atsico Fire.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think our Atsico Fire District money ends up going. Pretty sure.
All right.
But that doesn't change.
Well, I certainly will research that more. I'm talking to build property. The fire district, I understand is one thing, but the. As I say, the minute, for instance, you pay. Fire district in your. On your tax bill to the town of Atsico.
Wow, something I wasn't.
Any future sale of that property. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
One reason that the boards commendably decided to have this meeting. Was to make sure everyone was aware of it because ultimately, because it's uninhabited, there will be no public vote. Because there's no one to vote, so it'll come down to a decision, probably to a joint resolution of the two boards. If it's to happen, and I think the boards felt it was important to make sure citizens who had a concern. Understood what was going on and the relative current non-impact of, of doing this. Other than allowing the village jurisdiction, the police department to have access to our properties down there, the parking lots and the like. And hopefully to help foster some development there that's beneficial. Anyways, take that over. In fact, were we to put that into a zone or try and do that, there'd be a vote at the citizens. That's what happens in an annexation and my, yes, there's an intuitive aspect. But that has to be what's going to vote because, because there were people in it. If we had decided to try to expand that a little. This whole project would have been determined by a vote of those people. I think both boards realized it was an impact there.
So again, it's from the eastern curve of Linden Ave to the. Western side of the railroad.
Just so the clarification, I'm here representing the railroad and we were on board this way back before COVID and we're still fine. It doesn't impact our operations. So we were fine with it off the start. Really, I guess I mainly wanted to have the.
All right, well, we appreciate everyone coming, as we say. We felt it was important that the public know about it and. We have certainly had a really good working relationship with the town of Atsico. We can't tell you the next steps. I'm sure. Casper will misinform us all. Thank you all for coming tonight.